Tonight's meeting of the Sparta Planning Board, Ron Day is unable to attend based on a prior commitment. Meeting is now called to order. For the record, this meeting is being held on October 16th, 2024 at the Sparta Township Municipal Building located at 65 Main Street, Sparta, New Jersey. The time is now 6:34. This meeting may be viewed on YouTube at youtube.com/spartatwp. Please note that adequate public notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Please stand as we begin this meeting with a salute to our nation's flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the people of which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Fox, would you please call the roll?
Justin Canelis, Ernie Rixstad.
Here.
Christine Dunbar, Mike Sylvester, Vice Chairman Bill Enright.
Here.
Chairman Ron Day, Deputy Mayor Dean Blametti.
Here.
Joan Furman.
Here.
Jeanette Burke.
Here.
Celeste Luciano.
Here.
Brian Zimmerman.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. The next item on the agenda is an executive session. I'd like to proceed into executive session as described in Executive Session Resolution Number 2024-16 relating to Adrian Mirman versus Sparta Township Planning Board, Travis Surf, PA, DVM, taking action as Sparta Veterinarian Associates and Urgent Care and HCS Holdings, LLC. Please note that Mr. Collins will be recusing himself from this part of the meeting, and Mr. David Brady will be taking over as the Planning Board Attorney for this part of the meeting. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, so we have Celeste, Celeste as the first, and Ernie as the second?
Ernie's the first, I'm the second.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Dean Blametti.
Yes.
Jeanette Burke.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Bill Enright.
Yes.
Joan Furman.
Yes.
Celeste Luciano.
Yes.
Ernie Rixstad.
Yes.
Okay, that motion to go into executive session is passed. If you're watching at home on YouTube, give us about 30, 35 minutes, and we'll be back after we close out. Okay, welcome back. Thank you for your patience. The next item on the agenda tonight is a request for a minor subdivision application, Planning Board Number 2393. Mr. Collins, could you explain what this is and why an exemption is being requested?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Basically, Larry and Tana Allen previously obtained a minor subdivision along Glen Road just on the left-hand side, just before you reach the Rock Island Lodge or Rock Island Catering Facility. Their subdivision was basically to adjust the lot lines with their neighbors so that their neighbor would have some more land from their land, and didn't result in any new houses or new lots. But the driveway to Rock Lodge crosses the very corner of the property, and so in the course of the review, it was recommended that an easement be granted, or if possible, a lot line adjustment to let that driveway be entirely on the Rock Lodge property take place. That was effectively approved by the Planning Board here, and then it took some time at the County Planning Board, and the County Planning Board approved it with a condition that they have their surveyor do the survey of the Rock Lodge property as well, which took more time, but is good practice. And basically, Mr. Bankendorf for the applicant, he couldn't record them within 190 days of the date of the first resolution. That's a requirement for minor subdivisions, and in order to allow that to get recorded later, the board would have to reapprove it and extend the time period for recording of the deeds of minor subdivision. I recommend that to you on this case. It makes a lot of sense, and it really is just a housekeeping matter.
Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Do you think comments from the public on that?
You can, but it's not required, but you might want to.
Anyone from the public have any questions or comments?
Sure. So you should, if you have, you have it for you. It's a very simple resolution. It's basically, what it means is, it's a motion to reapprove the minor subdivision and extend the time period for recording of it for one more year. Is there such a motion?
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion?
Just a second.
A second. And a roll call.
Deputy Mayor Dean Blumetti?
Yes.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Christine Dunbar?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Bill Enright?
Yes.
Joan Furman?
Yes.
Celeste Luciano?
Yes.
Ernie Reagstad?
Yes.
Mike Silvestre?
Yes. And Dory, just for formalities, just make the record know that I was here for seven o'clock, not the executive session. I missed. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing portion of the meeting. We have one application be heard tonight. Application number 713 from Rames and Company for an amended site plan with variances. This discussion is being continued from our 10 October 2nd meeting. Welcome.
I think Mr. Salvaggi is outside, so hopefully he's coming in. We're ready for you, Mike.
Good evening, Michael Salvaggi from Labor Salvaggi Cohen on behalf of the applicant. This is a continued public hearing. I am going to obviously stall. My architect is out in the parking lot, so I can break into tune, or we can just wait. I did submit last month, our last meeting, we had discussed a overflow parking arrangement between the two properties, since the applicant, or the principal of the applicant, even though there's two different corporations, is the same individual. And the applicant will testify to that in a moment when, when he arrives as well. He's stuck in traffic. But we did, we did submit that. Tonight, what we're going to do is, and our engineer will be here as well, if you have questions, but we'll move into architecture. Then the principal of the company will testify, and then our planner will conclude. So what I'd like to do is, let's see my architect show up, but until she does, I'm not going to apologize.
No problem, Mike. We do have some items we could just talk about, not so much all of other board business, but just to give the board an update, we, we have a recommended open space plan from the Environmental Commission and the Township's consultant. And so we are scheduling that for a public meeting, a discussion meeting, for November 6th. And then if that is acceptable to the board at that night, it might be scheduled for a public hearing on amendment to the master plan to update the prior open space plan of the township, which is basically an element of the master plan. So this would be November 6th discussion, and the planner Barbara Haskins Davis from the consulting group for the plan will be here. And then on December 4th, if it's all moving well, it might be considered for a public hearing. And after that public hearing by the planning board, it might be adopted by the planning board as the open space element of the township of Sparta Master Plan. So that's a very exciting undertaking, and Christine can probably tell us more about it. But it looks like a good product. I think you got copies of it in an email. But it's a lot of reading between now and November and December, and it's good, good, good information, good mapping.
Are we keeping that meeting reserved just for that?
I'm not sure it's solely for that, but we're trying to make it mostly for that, right? I think there was one other item, maybe the P C E D, no, the P D R M 2 report, recommended ordinance amendment from Catherine for November 6th. And I'm not sure about December 4th yet, but.
Mr. Collins, while we're waiting, do you suggest we take five minutes to let their professionals come, or maybe move on to other portions of our meeting?
Yeah. Well, maybe use this time just to do any other board business, or the reports, and.
Yeah, let's move on. I'd like to save other, other board business for the end of the meeting. So let's move on to our updates from, from our various committees. So Town Council, Deputy Mayor Blumetti, I'll start with you.
Yep. Thank you, Chairman. I have an update on the October 8th Town Council meeting. So one item, one major item, is ordinance 24-15 was approved. That is with, regarding the flood hazard areas. And essentially, it was a pretty comprehensive update to our flood hazard area definitions. It aims to enhance the flood damage prevention. It adds a flood plain administrator, which is, will be, a role, not a, not a formal position, but it's a role that our township engineer, Corey Stoner, is going to take on. And other detailed improvements. Essentially, it's required by the NJDEP, and they provided the ordinance, the draft ordinance actually, to us, and we modified it for Sparta's unique situations. It's also required for the issuance of flood insurance, so it's really important that we have updated ordinance in place that matches the NJDEP's model ordinance. So it passed unanimously, and we look forward to having that in place going forward. The flood plain administrator will essentially have a role before it gets to here. They'll be looking for different things. And the, they'll highlight any kind of concerns, and they'll, really, the NJDEP is the ruling entity on this, though, but the flood plain administrator will help kind of smooth that process out and look for any flags or signs in there. That's all I have for tonight.
Thanks. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Ms. Dunbar, anything from the Environmental Commission?
Yes. Hold on just a second. I was just wondering, there is a component.
Christine, could you, Mike?
There's a, there's a component in our storm water management, and the municipalities were, by the end of July, we were to pass this particular stepping stone in the storm water management plan. Do you, does this ring a bell, or do you know anything about the passage of this very important step in complying with the new storm water regulations?
No, I could look into it, though, but I think that's separate from the flood plain and flood damage, flood zones.
Yeah, just wondering about that. Do we have a page on our website for storm water? Do you know which is required?
I don't recall. Yeah, is there anything under?
We were supposed to check all of the outlets and the inlets and everything.
Yeah.
The DEP has a comprehensive summary of both the flood hazard and the storm water changes. So if we, as reference, if we want on the website to reference that link to their fact, their fact questions and kind of preliminary or major changes to it, we could, some, I could work with Dory and get that over.
And the new storm water, parts of the new storm water, there were towns that were in a lower tier that weren't required to be where we were, but we were in the higher tier. So we were already compliant in Tier A. It's the ones that were in Tier B that had to come up to the Tier A.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I know we have been in that first tier.
Yeah, so, and they're, they're compliant with all those. I know they're.
I'm, I'm sure they are, too. But I know that we, we applied for $25,000, and I believe that we received it, so there must have been some things that needed to be implemented. So I was just curious about those. All right, so that's, that's, so I, do you want me to just finish giving my report? It's, it's very short.
Great.
And I think everybody is going to be dazzled and amazed with this, this open space and recreation plan, because it really meets, I think, what I heard the needs of our community are at this point in time with that other public hearing and the surveys that we did, and everything that I've heard since being on the planning board. It has many suggestions on ways that we can protect our natural resources, and we can provide more recreational opportunities, and that can all work together, including farmland preservation. And it's just, it's just wonderful. But it is long. I think it's 124 pages long. So start early, get a mug, get a mug of hot chocolate, and get the fire going, and, and, you know, just eat away at it a few pages a night. And there's lots of images, too, that are great. The figures are great. So thanks to the New Jersey Land Conservancy. And I do believe it'll probably require most of November 6th meeting to go through that. And I know that Barbara Davis is preparing a presentation. And hopefully, we'll get a lot of public, a lot of questions, suggestions.
And also, the council will be invited to that as well, my understanding.
Yeah, and other committees or commissions, like the Recreation Commission and everyone. We want everyone there. It's very important.
I could also add, too, it's, it's available on our website now, right? It's, it's posted out there. So if the public wants to look at it in advance, too, it's, they can find on the website.
Anything else, Christine?
Thank you.
Just a couple of updates from the subcommittees. Ron asked me to give the following update. The entire master plan subcommittee team has been very, very busy, extremely busy, trying to bring awareness to the community hub and the community survey. Some of the things done to date include having a subcommittee representatives at the Hanging with Heroes event. Celeste, we saw you there. Awareness of the survey at the Town Council, zoning board environmental meeting, environmental meetings. Tap into Sparta article with links to the survey. Thank you, Ms. Erics. Social media awareness postings, making future plans to have representatives at the farmer's market. The township-wide email that was, I believe, in everyone's inboxes today. And the subcommittee team asks everyone to understand the importance of the survey in order to help us understand what's important to the people that live in Sparta. So tell us your thoughts. Take the survey. It's three to five minutes of your day, and you can make a really big difference on how Sparta will move forward into the future. Ms. Luciano told me that there's over 400 people that responded or filled out the survey already, so that's fantastic.
Super excited in the first two weeks.
And you can access this survey at Sparta, www.spartamasterplan.com. If you don't fill out the www, it won't work. www.spartamasterplan.com, or there is a link on the Township's website which you can access at spartanj.org.
It'd be www dot?
Yes. From the minor site, minor site plan subcommittee, we hammered out a bunch of open applications. We were very light on September applications. We did get a few, I believe we got one today, which we have not looked at, but we did meet with prospective new business that were always happy to have them come in and meet with us. We went over some of their signage issues, and we came to a really great conclusion. They're happy, and they're going to be conforming with, with our ordinances, so that's fantastic. And the minor site plan committee, and along with Risha, continue to do really great work, and I'm very proud, too, of all the members. So thank you to Joan, thank you to Ms. Dunbar, and thank you to Ron as well.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes our updates from our committees and Town Council. You ready to, you ready to start? Okay, let's, let's go back to the top of the agenda and welcome in the folks from Rames and Company LLC, 61 Sparta Ave, Block 501, Lot 1.
All right. And I appreciate the board's patience, and we are ready to resume. I'd like to have our next witness sworn, if she can.
Yes, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Karen Wenchoff, 504 East Prospect, Hackettstown, New Jersey, 07840.
Karen, please spell your last name, I'm sorry.
W E N as in Nancy, S as in Sam, C H H O as in, and then F as in Frank.
Thank you. And Karen, have you testified before this board before?
Not this board, no.
Okay. So maybe if you and Mike would go over some qualifications. It doesn't have to be a lot, because I recognize you, but we'll, we'll.
Yes, so Karen, if you can just let this board know where you got your degree, just status of your license, and your experience in testifying in matters of architecture and other land use boards in New Jersey.
Sure. I have a master's degree in architecture from Boston Architectural College. I have also a associate's degree in interior design. I am licensed as an interior designer in the state of New Jersey, and I'm also a registered architect in the state of New Jersey.
All right. And you've testified in land use matters in other towns besides Sparta?
Yes, I have.
All right. Just a couple of quick examples, just for the record.
Sure. I've been before Byram, I've been before Clinton, I've been before, let's see, Ogdenburg, yes, Hackettstown. Yes.
The board will accept your qualifications as a registered architect and licensed interior designer. Please, please go ahead.
Karen, you were charged with kind of doing the interior architecture for these two, hopefully, restaurant spaces, correct?
Yes, I was.
All right. What went into the thought process, and perhaps when I do this, I mean, you've designed other architecture, I mean, excuse me, other restaurant space, correct?
Yes, I have.
How would you compare these two spaces to some of the other work you've done?
These two spaces I would consider to be small restaurant spaces. They're not very large, and they're definitely the smallest that I've designed thus far.
All right. So knowing that, and some of the other factors that run or associate with this property, what went into your design, and what'd you end up coming up with?
Sure. So the owner approached us to design these two empty spaces that he's had for quite some time on site. And he had had some interest from others to open restaurants in these two units. So we prepared some general layouts for restaurants based on the interest that he had had previously. So the front restaurant here, this is the one that's in the front corner as you approach the building. This one is designed to be more of a deli slash market-style restaurant, which was of interest, where you come in and you'll be able to order, and there'll be some seating, limited seating here in the middle on high-top tables. And this is all kitchen on the side. So on the, as you enter, on the right, that's really kitchen and service. The only customer area is this limited area here. In the rear restaurant, which we call Restaurant 1 on the plan, on this restaurant, it's a little bit of a larger space. This one was, again, kind of done for a order-at-a-counter type of restaurant. So you come in, you order at the counter, and then you can take your food and either sit at a table or go home.
All right. And what was the seating capacity of Restaurant 1, as you've laid it out?
So the seating capacity right now is at about 16.
Okay. And Restaurant 2, what would you pose there?
I would say that the seating capacity here is eight, in terms of how it's designed, so two per table.
Okay. And the Restaurant 2, which you've done, you've, in your work as an architect, you've, architect, you've laid it out, so it's really not going to be conducive to kind of a sit-down place?
Correct. This, this style of restaurant, the way it's laid out, really wouldn't be conducive to somebody coming in and having these sort of dine-in-style restaurant service, table-service restaurant.
What, and again, you go through the measurements and things like that, and sometimes for board members and myself, it's hard to kind of conceptualize it. Restaurant 2, what would be a comparable space that the board members may be familiar with?
I would equate this to a small Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks, this very small-sized one, would be basically the equivalent of this size restaurant. It's, it's pretty small. If you think about the space we're in here. If you think about the space we're in here, it wouldn't even come into this area at all. It would fit within this space that we're all sitting in and you'd have extra space as well.
Okay. And then Restaurant One up top with the additional seats, again, is, and maybe it's my view, but those three tables to the top of the page, and by the way, we should for the record, what are you presenting and discussing with the Board? I think you had submitted this, correct?
Yes, this was submitted last week. This is A100 with a revision date of 10/10/2024.
All right. And that's the same thing that was in fact hand-delivered here to the town?
Correct.
All right. The space up top, it looks kind of tight, those tables, correct?
Yes, that's just your general spacing, the closest you could really have them, so you couldn't really fit any more than what we're showing.
The space, the layout and everything else with the restaurant and the kitchen areas, all compliant with the applicable fire codes and none of that should be an issue if the Board were to grant an approval for this space?
Correct. Everything that is currently designed meets, and is there on site, meets the fire code as it stands.
All right. But for, and we'll hear from the client in a moment, in the restaurant work you've done in the past, I mean, would this be the most desirable layout for this space?
In terms of the way we're laying out each unit, I think that this is probably the best you can get out of each particular unit. And in terms of, you mean putting restaurants in general into the space? Putting restaurants in general, it's probably not your most desirable to have one back here from a marketing perspective. I mean, you don't have the greatest road exposure and traffic exposure and pedestrian exposure up here. This one definitely does. But again, this has been some of the only interest that's been presented to the owner thus far for these units.
Okay. Any signage associated? Were you asked to do any exterior signage on the building or anything for either one of these restaurants or how is signage going to be handled?
There will be signs on the exterior of the building over the front door.
All right. And it's your intention, again, if we get the approval, to have that signage compliant with the township's requirements?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have anything further for Karen. If, Mr. Chairman, if people have questions, by all means.
Sure. We'll start with Mr. Simmons.
Mr. Chairman, just referring to my report of September 30th, 2024, a lot of the comments were addressed by the applicants engineer at the last hearing with regards to the architecture. Just a couple items. I know on the plans you do have the free, excuse me, the facade signs shown for each one. Is there an intent to add signage on the freestanding sign?
There's been no intent thus far to add anything beyond what's already there, but maybe put the restaurant name on the existing sign that's there, but not to change the existing sign in any way.
Okay. And I had brought this up at the last meeting while the survey that was presented labeled that freestanding sign as a quote-unquote billboard. The intent is just to advertise on that for the businesses that are on this subject property, correct?
Correct.
Because when we think of a billboard, we think of other businesses advertising. That's not your case.
No, that will not be the case.
Okay. Did you indicate that there was existing fire suppression or that this would require additional sprinkle or fire suppression?
No, there isn't any and it does not require it as it is under the square footage that the IBC states for fire suppression.
Okay. And if you had two units, the way you're describing them on your plan, that A100, would that require additional HVAC units? And if so, where would they be located?
No, they won't. So these already have HVAC units that are in this property and we wouldn't need to change any to meet the needs of the restaurant. So they have exposed ductwork and traditional HVAC systems already in place.
Okay. And that's all I have on architecture, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Simmons, Samad?
Thank you. You'd mentioned that, you know, from a, from a marketing or visibility perspective that this was, it's not an ideal location for restaurants. I don't know what the, what specific tenants have been interested in the site, but do you have, or can you provide a little bit more details about what kind of impact the architectural setup as far as seating and not being a sit-down restaurant has on kind of traffic, as far as like foot traffic into the restaurant, turnover? Is it going to be mostly a pickup? Is it going to be an online ordering, mobile ordering, you know, situation? So how does the architectural kind of layout, how does the programming of the building impact the kind of use of the site?
Sure. I can't answer exactly the type of restaurants that were proposed to maybe the owner to go in here, but in general, I'll talk about the architecture and what it implies. So the architecture here, for instance, the layout that's in Restaurant Two, which is the front restaurant, again, when you're entering into the site, this one is more conducive of what I would call a small market takeout. So all prepackaged goods for the most part, pre-made foods, maybe some fresh-to-go, not necessarily any sort of heavy cooking going on. This would also perhaps, here we have shelving across the back, so if you had, just think of like an Italian market or some sort of market where you've got packaged goods also ready to go. So it would be a mixture of packaged and prepared. And this obviously would be more conducive of people coming in, ordering or picking up and then leaving. And some people may choose to stay and eat, but not to a greater extent in this particular one. Also might be a restaurant that does catering, so that would be another thing. So again, catering where people are getting orders and maybe they're even delivering these orders, you know, to their customers. So that would be another use for either restaurant really, is more of the catering, which seems to be the more successful way that a lot of restaurants are making money in New Jersey right now is through kind of larger orders going out. The rear restaurant has a little bit more seating than the front and this one would be a little bit more of cooking going on. I foresee this one being more of a traditional kitchen and having a little bit more of, you order, you come in, and then again, a little bit better seating. So you'll have a little bit more people here sitting down and eating before they leave. So maybe not as in and out as here, but definitely still probably a little bit more in and out than a traditional table-service restaurant.
Okay.
Just to follow up on the planner's question, I mean, neither one of these...
Can you use the microphone, please?
Microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to follow up on the planner's question, you don't envision either one of these to have waiter or waitress service or anything like that, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So do you think with the way that the restaurants have been set up, there's probably, especially for the front restaurant, a higher turnover of customers coming in and out, whether it be a, like you said, a specialty market or even a pizza place? Is that something that's going to have higher turnover than a sit-down restaurant?
Yeah, I would say in general, you probably get a little bit higher turnover. But then again, sit-down restaurants do also do takeout, so they also have quite a bit of turnover even with the sit-down restaurants. So in some ways, you know, I'm not going to say that it's 100% one or the other, but it will depend on the success of the restaurant, of course, and what they're selling.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I had for the architect.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Samad. Want to open it up to the DA, Celeste, you want to finish off?
Nothing for this witness. Thank you.
Ms. Burke? Ms. Furman?
Just have one quick question on the amended site plan that was submitted. If you look at the square footage and it'll say, let me find it now, one per 50 square feet of service and eating area, does that include the bathrooms?
No, that does not. No, that does not.
So the 700 would be for, because then it has 700 kitchen.
Correct. So the service area is...
With the kitchen?
Yeah, so the service and eating area is the front part here. The kitchen is, and then separate, if you're looking at Restaurant Two here, this would be the service area where I'm kind of highlighting with my finger. And then this would be your kitchen area. And then here, this is service. The bathroom is not counted. Because it's not a...
Where, if you have to have a parking spot per certain square footage and there's no square footage counted for bathrooms?
It's not considered a service area, the bathroom part.
Do we exclude all of that in calculations when we do square footage?
So for, specifically for restaurants, the requirement excludes kitchen, storage, and it only includes the service and eating area. It's intended to capture basically the seats and the capacity of the restaurant rather than the entire square footage, which would traditionally be for most parking standards. But for this parking ratio, it's intended to capture that seating capacity area.
Okay, so there is some missing square footage here then, because if you have total area 1,400 square feet, 700 kitchen, 700 eating area. So that's not the total square footage of the restaurant.
That is the net square footage, yes. So we, you know, in architecture, we do net and gross, yes, and we take that, take that out.
That's it.
So I'll continue that line of thinking then. So for restaurant number two, are you saying then that you're not including the entire right half of that space except for the kitchen area next to the bathroom? That whole prep area, restaurant number two, sorry.
This one up here, oh, number two, this part?
Yeah, to the right there, that whole, the whole right section that says...
This is the kitchen...
Prep area?
Yeah, this is all included in the kitchen square footage. So this is the kitchen square footage here. Okay, so here, just in here, in Restaurant Two we're looking at, which is, we basically have in this little area here on quarter-inch scale, we've got about 13, about 13 feet and you've got about 27 feet. And that will give you about 350 square feet. That's all you've got here. It's a very small area.
So the right section?
Yeah, this little area here, if you don't count the vestibule, you don't count the bathrooms, you don't count the utility or anything else, just this little tiny area here.
Dean, do you have the plan in front of you? Do you have a copy of the architectural plan?
Yeah.
If you look at the right side table, actually, look at the table right to the right of the plan.
Yep.
It includes those breakdowns, actually.
Yeah, see that?
Yep.
So the kitchen back of house that has 650, is that just the rear section where it says back of house kitchen area?
Yes, this part here, this whole area.
Okay, so that is the whole section, not just the rear rectangle?
Correct. It's this whole area. It just fit better there, but yes.
Okay. Okay. Next question is Restaurant Number One.
Yes.
I see a discrepancy. If you look at the diagram, it shows 16 seats.
Yes.
If you look at the calculations on the Restaurant Number One, counts 12 seats.
Okay, Restaurant One.
Not the parking, I'm sorry, the next to it, the occupancy?
Over here, occupancy.
Yeah. It has assembly with fixed seating, it says 12 seats.
12 seats.
But the diagram shows...
I see that, yes, yes. Yep.
That's old.
So that would be, that would need to be modified. Because that does say 12 seats.
So which is it?
So it's modified to 16, or is it...
Yeah, because we're showing 16 seats here.
Is the plan to include 16 seats?
I think that this one is kind of questionable because of the tightness of here and next to the service counter, so I think you probably would be better off with only 12. In fact, you know, you might even want to make them two-seaters, you know, where you could kind of break them apart and redo them. Because this one, to me, is a little bit close here and it's going to be a little awkward if people, if you want to make a line and then say you want to have a condiment counter or something like that down on the side. So, I mean, my preference would be to eliminate it and just to do the 12.
So is that...
But I let the owner...
Yeah, what implications?
Yeah, fine. Yeah, he's fine with that.
What are the implications of the occupancy calculations? Right now, it's, the whole building is 47, but obviously it's excluding four, four seats.
Yeah, so if we remove this table and we put more of like an area here again for condiments and then we take this table out, and then we would be back at that being the proper, the proper number that's shown on the plan.
Okay. So that, is that where you're...
Yes, I just asked the owner. He said that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, one last question. Back to Restaurant Number Two, can you just talk a little bit more about, again, the right side where it says prep area, behind it has deli display cases, but they're against the far-right wall, which is quite a distance from where the patrons would be? Can you describe what would happen in that large space there that...
Sure. I think that it's kind of more, the display cases are really more upfront, obviously. It's kind of, the arrows got a little bit mixed up. But display here, but deli counter here. And the idea in the middle is that it's a prep area so that you can kind of have all of your refrigeration units and things in the back here, and then this would be your prep counter in the middle. And then upfront on, facing the service center and the, in the client interaction, that would be where you could display your food. So you could have refrigeration cases if needed, or you could have reaching cases, and you could obviously also have just unrefrigerated cases for things that didn't require refrigeration, like bakery and other items like that.
Thank you. I should have began with thank you for your testimony too. Beginning, I jumped right into my question, but thank you.
No problem.
Sir Rockstein?
No questions? No.
No questions. As February Mayor said, thank you very much for your testimony tonight. I just have a few.
Sure.
In the top right corner, it looks like a staircase that would be leading, is that the kitchen to the left of it?
Yes, so this is, this is a exterior staircase and it's existing as is and it would go directly into the kitchen.
And that's for loading, unloading, and employees only?
Yes, correct.
Is that the same with the staircase that's underneath it leading to the other kitchen?
Yes, correct. This is employees only.
Earlier during Mr. Simmons's question, he brought up fire suppression. And he said that the, both of the restaurants are, don't, are fall under a certain threshold that some kind of governing body says. Can you expand on that a little bit?
Sure. There's the International Building Code and that is the adopted code here in New Jersey. They have a section which basically requires fire suppression in certain situations. In this particular use group, the limit is 5,000 square feet and we're under 5,000 square feet, therefore we're not required to have fire suppression.
Is that for the total building is under 5,000 square feet or just the two restaurants?
It's the fire-rated areas. So since these are fire-rated from one another and then also these are fire-rated, so the pharmacy has its own, it's, and then you have Restaurant One and Restaurant Two, and they're each separate fire areas.
Very much. Okay, if there's no further questions from the DA, it's opening up for the public for any, not comments, testimony?
Right now it's questions of this witness.
Questions from this witness.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to question this witness?
I'm Marjorie Murphy, nine Pueblo Parkway.
Marjorie, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
Are you, have any plans? I didn't see any of the architecture to make it anything in a village-type architecture, any colors, anything that would blend with the rest of the town? And would you have any type of food that you're going to put there? Is it a chain? Do you have any, any idea at this point in time?
So to answer the first question, there's no proposed changes to the facade other than to put signage up. Otherwise, we're going to keep the facade as it is today. than to put signage up, otherwise, we're going to keep the facade as it is today, so there's no plans to change that. In terms of the second question, there aren't tenants yet signed up for these spaces, so there's no specific food, but it's my understanding it would be single ownership, not necessarily chain stores.
And are they connected, those two, in the back? Can you go from one to the other, or they're totally separate?
They're totally separate. There is no pass through any of these units to get to the other unit.
And the parking, I know I missed that last time, the parking would be, because it's pretty tight as it is, but I understand that if there's an, the owner has the other building, it could be shared? Is that...
Yeah, he'll testify in a moment, but that's what he will...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hi, Mark Scott, nine Pueblo Parkway.
Have you previously sworn on this matter?
Probably, but we'll do it again.
Sure. Do you swear a friend to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, sir. Is there going to be any limit on the signage that will go on this building for the restaurant? Is it, I know we're working on a master plan, and I think the town is trying to bring it back to the way the, the town looks, I mean, if, I mean, if you were to put a Buffalo Wild Wings and a Hooters there, I don't think that's really what we want on that corner, a big Hooters sign. So would this be, would there be signage limits?
We would, we would agree that the signage...
Please use your microphone, I'm sorry. Can you please use your mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We would agree that the signage would be in compliance with whatever the relevant or applicable township standards are at that time.
Okay, but the standards, we're operating off of our 1984 standards, so...
I, I, I understand what you're saying, I, we can't do anything but follow what the law is at that time. If, obviously, between now and, and whenever this space were to get built out, if those standards changed, we would be complying with that.
Maybe that was more of a question for the planning board rather than you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Anyone else from the public for this witness?
But Mr. Savaji, first of all, the ordinances about signage are not 1984. Yeah. And second of all, the witness testified that the only changes are that the, each restaurant would have a typical sign in front of the restaurant, and a possible change in the name on the freestanding sign.
That's correct.
That is not a billboard, right?
That's right, it's not.
And so, so basically, what you're saying to us and the board and the public is, this particular building will basically look on the outside exactly as it looks now.
Correct.
And in your opinion, as an architect, based upon its materials, its colors, and its roof, and its windows, is this building consistent with the town center design standards?
I believe so, it has really lovely kind of extra windows on top, it's double-story space inside, and it has a little bit more personality and character, that it's not just a box, it's not just a typical kind of strip mold box to it, it has character, and it has more fitting look to go with the, the overall look of the town.
And was this building redeveloped at the same time as the building next door with the similar materials?
That I'm not sure.
And so what are the colors and materials on the, outside of this building?
The colors, I don't think I have a colored picture to show you, but let me just check. Let me just see if I have a picture, just so I can show it from the... Yeah, it's like a light green, it's like a seed, like, yeah. I don't have it colored, but I do have the facade.
Elevation, okay. And what, why don't you describe the elevation?
Yeah, then refer to the sheet that, this was part of their submission, correct?
This was part of the original submission, this is CO4. This particular one has a revision date of, I believe that says 9/15/2024. So this particular building has a mix of different facades, it's not just one. So we have brick, we have a stucco, and then we have basically a shingle slash siding, so I should say asphalt shingle, and then we have clapboard siding. So it has a nice mix of materials as it is, it's not just one material. You have the brick going up to a water table that goes underneath the larger windows, you have a varied roof line, so the roof line isn't just one, we have a varied roof line with alternating roofs, and we also have some perpendicular to the other. And again, like I mentioned, we do have these taller windows which are open inside, so you can see up and give extra light from an interior.
Mr. Collins, not to get too lawyerly on this, but our planner, who will be testifying in a little bit here, has taken a series of photographs with drone, with his drone. He can authenticate them now, but they do give pictures of the building from pretty much all four, certainly all three sides.
That's fine, and you can present it when he testifies, that's, that's fine.
And just to add to it, you'll see the photographs in color, but it's, it's basically kind of a green and a gold color currently.
Any other questions for Ms. Winshaw?
May I ask one more? The publicist done?
Or yours?
Okay. In the back of the building is the loading area, the loading zone, and I believe at the last meeting, it was brought up that loading would, that parking spot number 24 would be in, between the loading zone and have to go through there, but I don't see an opening over here, so correct me if I'm wrong, but from the loading zone, you'd have to go up that steep hill around the corner to one of these two stairwells on the right-hand side? Would it make more sense to put that by parking spot 23 or 22, that are right near the stairwell?
Okay, so we're on sheet CO3, correct, is what you're looking at? Oh, you're still on that one, okay. So, but you're talking about these parking spaces, correct? Over here, 23?
Well, we have this one.
And then you're saying how they would access the building?
Right, so you'd have to go up that steep incline around parking spot 23, and go in between 22 and 23 into the stairwells. Does that make sense to you as an architect?
Depending, if you, if you're going to load, I mean, these ones, these restaurants, to be honest, I'm not sure, and since we don't have them actually rented, but often smaller restaurants, they actually pick up their own food and they bring it in a van, so it would be more of a, you go to Restaurant Depot, you go, got what you need to get, and you bring it in, in either a van or a truck. So a lot of the people might just choose to kind of park on that very end, it's not a big, large truck, so on that end space and be able to come right back in.
So they would take up a parking space instead of the loading zone?
They could, well, they could use either one, but again, I'll kind of defer to the engineer on the site plan, but in terms of, as long as there's access to these spaces from an architectural standpoint, you know, that's what's most important, that somebody can get to the stairs and go up the stairs.
So actually, and those are existing, so it's not like you're creating anything new?
Correct, yeah, these are already there.
I have a follow-up question too, related to the signs. Just to clarify, you're not seeking approval for the signs tonight as part of this application? You'll come back to the site plan waiver subcommittee when you have the tenants figured out?
Correct.
I believe if, if we meet with your town's standards, I think we could just get a zoning permit for that, correct, Mr. Collins?
I think that the way it works in Sparta is for the new signage, you go for a minor site plan subcommittee for the, but if they're fully conforming, it can be approved by the minor site plan subcommittee.
Okay.
And a sign permit. But you did show where they are and where they're going to be, and you're, you're, you're saying they're going to be complying, so that's good, so...
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Winshaw.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I'd now like to call our next witness.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for your time.
Sir, you have to come sit with Mike, and you, well, we'll swear, have you sworn?
Very excited, he's, can't wait to start.
Sir, please raise your right hand, do you swear a friend to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
And please state your name and address.
Camille Yassin, 259 High Chris Drive, West Milford, New Jersey, 07480.
Thank you, please go ahead.
Okay. Let's start right, and what, what's your connection with the applicant, Ramirez and Company LLC?
I am an owner, it's an LLC, 50/50, me and my wife.
Okay. And when did you guys purchase the property at 61 Sparta Avenue?
I do believe 2009.
Okay. And if you remember, when you bought in 2009, how was it being used at that time?
At the time, I purchased it and I sold it to like a cleaner, and two years later, he gave it back to me, it was full of mold, and I went ahead and I demolished the entire building and rebuilt it in brand new.
Okay, and then from that point forward, were you just leasing the spa, the interior space out?
Yes, I leased, there was three units, the big one is the Sparta Pharmacy, the second one was Flex Nutrition, which sold vitamins and health food stuff, and the third one was the cutting zone, which was a hair salon.
Okay. And when did the hair salon and the nutrition store vacate?
Well, the hair salon around a year and a half ago, and the Flex Nutrition, almost four, maybe five years.
Okay. And, and the spaces have remained vacant since the departure of both tenants, correct?
Correct.
All right. Now, you also own the adjacent property, or the property to, if you're looking at from the road, from the right?
57th Sparta Avenue is also under Camille Enterprises, which is also LLC that's owned between me and my wife, and I do believe, I purchased it, I think 2016, maybe 2015, when Radio Shack went out of business.
Okay.
And I renovated that building the same way, like the other building with the facade, so to make them conformant with like the look.
Then that was the, the design standards that the town had, correct?
Correct, correct.
And what is going on at Camille Enterprises? I mean, how's that property currently being used?
The downstairs is occupied by Sparta Orthopedic, and the upstairs, there were two existing apartments when I purchased the property, and they are rented out to two ladies with one or two kids each.
Okay. The two residential apartments upstairs, how many bedrooms in each?
I do believe one bedroom.
Each?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, the spaces that you're, you're trying to use at 61 Sparta Avenue, during the period of time they've been vacant, what kind of interest, if any, have you gotten in terms of potential tenants?
Mostly restaurants. Everybody wants to have a restaurant in there. Just for your information, I also own Green Life Market in Andover, you know, and I've been operating that very successfully since 2016, and we do a lot of food preparations in there, and, you know, to also go back to some of the questions I heard from the public in regards, or the board members, about trucks coming in and out of the property, we, we deliver to other stores that we own, we have three stores, and we deliver them through vans, we prepare everything, everything refrigerated, and we just deliver it, so those two restaurants are small, and I don't anticipate that they're going to be busy all the time. Hopefully, they will be, you know, and that's, I try to bring to the, almost every town that I, you know, I participate, and whatever the board is looking for, we try to comply with all the rules and the regulations that you guys have.
Now, when Karen was testifying as to the restaurant space, that, that smaller space that was kind of like a takeout?
Yes.
Would that, is that something comparable to what you have going on in Andover right now?
Yes.
All right. And you would envision the same thing going on here at that space?
Yes, well, the, the first one, which was the Flex Nutrition place, we had a Portuguese guy that wanted to ob, to open a Portuguese grill, and at one point, he's like, maybe we'll just have it as a takeout, you know, so he anticipates most of his business to be takeout more than, you know, sit down. You know, the other one, I was thinking about Middle Eastern restaurant, you know, like a gyro grill or something like that. Most of those, even if you go to Patterson, New Jersey, most of those are, you pick up the phone, you order, they'll tell you half an hour, you come in, you pick it up, and you go. That's, that's what I do personally sometimes.
And as we sit here right now, do you have any potential tenants lined up?
The Portuguese guy keeps texting me and saying, are you approved yet? That's, that's what it is. So he's waiting very patiently, he's very excited about it, and I, I think it would be a good addition to Sparta Township, you know, to have a different, you know, type of restaurant, you know, that's, I don't know.
And for, for the record, he would take the, the space in the back, is that the space he's interested in?
Yes, that's, that's the space he's looking at.
All right. And when we talk, I, it, again, right now, be a lunch, dinner place?
Most of it possibly will open after 11 o'clock in the morning, and possibly stays later. That's when the Sparta Pharmacy possibly closes, so there's ample parking in there, and the same thing with Sparta Orthopedic. Most of the time, it's closed at 3 o'clock, sometimes 4 o'clock, and there's, you know, there is a lot of parking, you know, whenever you come in, even, even with the hair salon, we didn't have that problem, because people come in, they make appointments, they take it and leave.
All right, now, because you own the, the property next door, you'd be willing to agree that any overflow, to the extent it was necessary, would be available at 57 Sparta Avenue?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
All right, and, and you and I had kind of put together a, a parking easement, which you reviewed and we sent to the town. I mean, to the extent, and I don't mean to put Mr. Collins on the spot, but I mean, at least in principle, you'd be willing to make that as a condition of, of any approval, that 57 and 61 could be used almost in combination with one?
Yes, absolutely, no problem.
Now, with that, it raises the question, you know, with the space at, at 57, I mean, is that, you know, is, is the parking lot always full over there?
No, not at all. I, I stop by, you know, at least three times a month over there, and there's plenty of parking, in fact, sometimes there's no parking at all, I mean, it's empty.
Okay. And there was a question last time about, you know, because your upstairs tenants may have children, I mean, is there a defined playground area or anything else in the back of that property where these kids would?
There wasn't, but I, I noticed that they had, you know, like some, like some toys in the back, and I barely don't see anybody there, except the weekends, once in a while, but, you know, usually the mother is with them, I barely seen her like in the past year, maybe once or twice.
Okay. Now, in the engineer in his report also noted that, and expressed some concerns about the landscaping and the maintenance and landscaping at 61 Sparta Avenue. I know you've looked at that report, to the extent necessary, you're prepared to do whatever's... To the extent necessary, you're prepared to do whatever is required to bring that landscaping back and in conformance with, I guess, the original site plan?
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
And also, I needed to address a question that was asked about water drainage. That was redesigned when I redid the property, you know, when we demolished everything. It was redesigned by Fitzpatrick, and everything was approved with the town on all the water drainage. There was a small holding tank, and then it will overflow, I guess, somewhere. I don't know. But it was approved by the town. When we built... When we rebuilt it, the whole entire parking lot was redesigned as far as the water flow. I heard that last time, so I figured I can just answer that question.
Okay. I don't have anything further.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons, do you have any questions for Mr. Yassin?
With regards to the cross-easement between the two buildings, I guess the next-door building, 57 Sparta Avenue?
Yes.
When I was out there to visit the site, on the wall of the building that faces 61 Sparta Avenue, I believe it was the chiropractic or orthopedic person, every one of those spaces, as I recall it, had a sign for his use only. With regards to which spaces would be available to one of the tenants of these restaurants, where would you propose that those spaces be located?
Well, number one, there was no agreement with me, with the lease, with him, that he would assign these specifically for him. He possibly chose that on his own and, you know, maybe to attract attention as far as signage is concerned. There's plenty of parking also in the back because the two ladies that live there, they work, and there's always empty spots in the back. We can locate some of them to the back and leave some for him in the front. Maybe we can just take half and put it in the back of the building.
Okay. With regards to the drainage in the back, in the area that you've shown on the plans as the loading zone?
Okay.
Like in a hole, if you will, did I understand you to say that that particular area, is it basically like a dry well?
I do believe so, yes. All the way at the bottom of that steep driveway, yes.
Yes. Do you still have a copy of those plans?
I do not recall if I do, but I'm sure if I do, I can forward them to you.
Okay.
Most likely, they're possibly in my email.
Okay.
And if not, I'll drop a copy to the town.
Okay. Those are my main questions to this applicant, Mr. Chairman.
And just to let you know, I didn't have... Since 2009 till now, I never had any problem with the water at the bottom of that steep driveway. We never had it like come up and flood, and it goes into the basements, never.
Speaking of the basement, though, on the architect's plans, they show the stairway going into the two proposed restaurants. I'm trying to remember, but isn't there a walk-in door in the basement, in the back by that loading zone?
No. The loading zone is all the way at the bottom.
Correct.
That accesses the basement, and there is no access to either location.
But there is a door into the basement?
Yes, yes, there is a door.
I don't think that shows on the architect's plans.
Are there stairwell... Is there a stairwell from the basement to the pharmacy or the...
Only the pharmacy.
Only the pharmacy.
Yeah, there's another empty space on the side that I keep some paperwork and stuff like that. It's not supposed to be used for, you know, anything else.
So these two restaurants would not use any part of the basement?
Not at this point, no, but if, you know, if they need to use it, then they have to come back to the town and get whatever approvals they need. But no, there is no plan for us to let them use it, no.
And I don't think, and this may be more of a question for the architect, I don't think there's anything on this plan that shows from the restaurants to get down to the basement.
No.
No access?
No access.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Sir Mark?
Thank you.
We have a curious question that came up at the last meeting, and that was, there seem to be quite a few cars parked in the back during the day, and even stacked, meaning one behind the other like a garage. Who parks in the back during the day, and why are so many cars stacked there?
I spoke to the pharmacist. I heard that question when you guys asked it last week, and I spoke to the pharmacist, and she says, "Maybe there was some deliveries. Sometimes they have some meetings downstairs." You know, maybe they're doing training for other employees because they own multiple pharmacies.
For the pharmacy?
Yes. And I asked, I asked the pharmacist at the time if he's going to have this many employees go rent across the street from Big Lot, you know, spaces that allows you to park that many cars. This is not allowed.
Okay. Well, but that... You think it was the pharmacy, not... Because there's no other tenant operating it right now?
No, it's just the pharmacy, yes.
So it's a little tight back there, and it's unusual because of its grade. You think you could live with one restaurant and just in the front and not the restaurant in the back?
Um...
And try to get a retail tenant for the back restaurant because the parking spaces in front of that are very shallow. The aisle is down to 20 feet, I think. So when you back out of the parking lot by that restaurant, it's very difficult to get in and out. So you're actually having, what, you're reaching a cap on your parking. That's why you're talking about four parking spaces being overflow. So what do you think about that? What do you think about one restaurant instead of two and trying to, say, improve the parking lot configuration of both lots?
Well, what about when the pharmacy lease expires next October? Maybe I'll turn the entire building to a restaurant.
That's an option. Then you... You can do things like that, and sometimes you can do them by minor site plan's subcommittee review. But the problem you're running up against is that the parking requirements for restaurant are not... Were not initially built into this site plan. So you're basically reaching caps because of your parking.
Yeah, but at the other business, no matter which one you put in there, they always require parking. And I've had several tenants that came in from like massage therapists to, you know, like medical... They're all concerned about the parking in the... So no matter who comes in, I can't rent the space. And that's why I was thinking like if...
See, but that's a reason... That's a reason to take both your lots to... And I don't know if it's feasible, but basically modernize your parking arrangement with clearer striping with perhaps fill that backyard of the main building so that you have a loading space at grade with the building. You know, things that would give you compliant parking, but right now, we're... You're really having trouble with some of those spaces are not complying as to size. They're not complying as to grade. And yet, you're asking for two restaurants. Yes, you're trying to restrict the number of tables, but you're not dealing with the constraint you're running up against, which is the parking needs for the uses. So I think it's something to think about, and I think, you know, the fact that you own both lots gives you the ability to modernize the parking and update the spaces so they're fully compliant as to size or width or grade. Doesn't sound like the downstairs is used that much for access from the rear. So I'm not sure you need to have that kind of rear yard the way you've got it, especially if you reconfigure your entire two-lot parking arrangement. So did you appear at the planning board in 2009?
Yes.
For the change at that time?
Yes.
And that was for both lots, wasn't it?
No, that was for the Sparta Pharmacy, yeah.
That was for the...
61. He didn't buy the other lot until...
The lot until 2016?
Yeah.
And so... But when you bought the other lot, what's convenient now is that you have the ability to... You know, you do have an easement across your lot. You do have your existing driveway cut you have to live with, but it's an opportunity to create a modern parking arrangement that works for both buildings. And you're getting closer, but those spaces in the back, they're not compliant, so... And really, can't have stacked... I'm not criticizing the pharmacy for what they did to have people park in the back. That was their day that they needed some parking, and they made a wise choice to stack some of their employees. But that can't be a permanent parking arrangement.
Correct.
You can't count those. So you're trying to do a little bit here, but it's also... It's kind of a situation where you're... That restaurant seating arrangement, even at a low end, is triggering a parking waiver at least. And the sizes and space arrangements for those spaces don't comply, so the board would have to give relief from the size and from the grade, and you could do something about that, so...
I would be willing to do that. I do believe the Sparta Pharmacy, I mean, the Sparta Orthopedic, mentioned that he might be retiring in a year, maybe a year and a half. And at that point, I do believe that I would have the opportunity, you know, depending on which tenant to come in, maybe we'll come in and rearrange the whole entire parking space. Maybe I can, you know, like, as you suggested, maybe instead of two restaurants, we'll have one restaurant. The problem is, how do you connect them both together? That means one of the retail spaces has to be a full kitchen, and then the other one has to be all tables. So my idea right now, what I'm thinking about doing is, the smaller space will be a takeout restaurant with a very small kitchen, and we would prepare most of it at the Green Life Market and bring the prepared food there. And then the other one is Portuguese. He already thought about just having it as a takeout. So I don't anticipate that we're going to have a lot of parking issues, to be honest.
Well, but the problem that you have is that the ordinance does require a better parking arrangement if you're going to have two restaurants. So just think about it. Try to look at your configuration. I don't see a problem with you combining your two parking lots for purposes of an overall site plan. I don't... I'm not criticizing the proposed easement. I think that that's a good idea. But what I'm really saying is, it makes sense to actually reconfigure these two parking lots. For example, there shouldn't be any perpendicular parking against the orthopedic building. That ought to be parallel. So you should have parallel... You should have a drive-through to the back without, you know, the space is limited between the two buildings, and you do have an easement there that you have to maintain. So you could modernize each one of your parking spaces to be a fully compliant parking space, and then figure that count as your maximum parking, and then use that to back into how many seats you can have in your restaurant. But right now, you're not compliant. So how do we get you... How do you get closer to full compliance with parking?
With the seating, lowering the seating from, I do believe she said, she mentioned, Karen said, from 12 to 8?
All right. She was going 16 to 12, but that was already in the counts.
Okay.
16 to 12 was in the counts, and what I'm really saying is, you can't count those spaces that are proposed in the back that are not compliant. So... And you do have a variance when you increase the coverage from 70... I think it's 70.5 to 71.5, something like that. Just putting in more pavement is a parking variance on this site. And yet, if you looked at the overall two lots, maybe it's not 70%. Maybe it's more compliant. Maybe you could actually reduce the coverage. So... But you have this problem, not... And it is that it doesn't comply with the ordinance.
If you drop it from 12 to 8, would that help?
I don't know. I think what the problem is, we're trying to count spaces that don't really work, and we can't count those. So, for example, the ones in the back, I think it's the greatest, like 6% or 8% or something like that. They should be... I don't know. Is there a standard for grade for parking, Dave? I think it's like 6%.
Normally, normally on a cross-slope like that, usually, the steepest grade we like is a 5% grade. And one of the reasons for that is, if you actually parked on the spaces that he's got shown on the steeper part, with 5%, you could open up the driver's side door and hold it and get out. I'm afraid if somebody parked on that steep slope, they tripped the lever on their door, and it slammed right in the car right next to them. It's that steep. It's more than 5%.
I don't want to have you change your whole site. I'm really saying, you're bumping up against the cap. You're over a cap, okay? You're over a cap on the number of seats at the restaurants. And so you have the ability to just stay as you are, which is retail. You have some ability to perhaps have one restaurant and try to keep your parking arrangement. Maybe you have those four spaces parallel... Well, I don't know where you want to put them, but the front yard of the orthopedic could be easily used for the four spaces that you're adding. But it needs some... It needs a better arrangement, and you're pushing too much on the restaurant use, I think.
What do you guys suggest? I mean...
One restaurant. I'm suggesting one restaurant. I don't know what the board thinks, but I'm suggesting to you that this arrangement doesn't meet your parking. Your parking does not satisfy this. And, you know, you can ask for waivers. You can ask for relief. You can ask for relief on the variance for the coverage increase. I think that that's a hard sell, but you're the applicant, so if you want to push it. But it seems like there's better ways to try to comply with the ordinance and just have... And one is just to have retail.
And with that, if I do one restaurant, do I have to do the cross-easement?
I think you'd... I don't know, but it seems like you do have to still have it because you have... You're having a parking compliance count number, too. You really... You can't count a space that doesn't comply. And so you're the one, you know, your architect has to help you demonstrate that without increasing coverage, you can have complying parking count on the lot in question. Now, you're saying, "I want to substitute for from the adjacent lot." That can be done, but it's complicated. So maybe you're better off going retail in one of the spaces, the rear space, for example, and restaurant in the other. Maybe you have to reconfigure the bathrooms to do that.
Gentlemen, if you don't mind, I'm going to interrupt for just a minute. Officer Morris is here. He's our traffic and safety expert, and he is on duty presently, and he has to go actually do his full-time job. So, Mr. Morris, do we want to come to the microphone and just give a quick update based on your memo and your opinion on the matter?
Corporal, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please go ahead, corporal.
Just based off the memo I supplied to everyone here, it's no obvious the parking's an issue. He's even saying it's an issue as well by going adjacent to his property. I didn't answer in that in my memo. That was never an option. I'll speak on that really quick. You know, there would have to be some kind of safety measure crossing that active driveway for both... That driveway's for both businesses there. The orthopedic is open till 8:00 at night, not 2:00, 3:00, 4:00. So you do have traffic there. When I did state my memo, I believe, when those all three businesses were up and running, we had a parking issue then. Last night, I just happened to be in the parking lot around 6:45. There was 10 vehicles in the main parking lot, you know, just for Sparta Pharmacy. There were vehicles in the back. I would highly recommend not parking vehicles behind orthopedic where residential property is. There's a safety measure there. Pulling out into... Pulling out into the traffic, it's a state road, it's not a back road, one lane. It's double lane on each side. Pulling out there is an issue. I understand this building, it's been said many times by their attorney that this is what it's zoned for. It was 20 years ago. Traffic has increased 1,000%. And it's just a heavy populated area that close to the intersection. And I just do not see two restaurants coming in there. You know, like Mr. Collins said, maybe different businesses would be better. With restaurants come in, that's where delivery comes. You might not say there's gonna be delivery, there's DoorDash, Uber Eats, what have you. But, you know, you have to account for employees, you know. It's just, obviously, the parking is an issue. It's a tight area, it's not safe to have the two restaurants there and especially using the property adjacent, crossing from one property to another on a busy driveway for both businesses.
I'm going to agree with Mr. Collins as far as having one restaurant instead of two, as long as you leave the other one as retail. So, I'll go for one restaurant and leave the other one as retail. However, the question is, in the event Sparta Pharmacy leaves, would I be able to open that as a restaurant and not come back in front of the board again, you know, to proceed?
Well, on that score, what's happening is, restaurants have a different parking standard than retail. And so, that's why you're even here, on this application. So, you have to try to address, you have to be compliant. You can, Kurt, but hold on one second, I just want to understand, I want him to understand that he's actually asking for relief for, because you have restaurants. So, if you can fully comply with your parking on the lot, you can do restaurant, that's allowed.
I agree with you as far as one restaurant, I'm okay with that. Whatever, if it, if it's gonna make, you know, a traffic hazard and gonna make problems, I don't want to do that. So, I will, I will agree that I'll keep the back one where Flex Nutrition is as a restaurant and keep the other one for retail, so we don't have to, you know.
I'm suggesting the other way around. I'm suggesting that the parking spaces in the front of the building by Newton, Sparta Road are shallow. It's actually the aisle, it was approved that way, but it is an aisle that is 20 feet in width instead of 20, 24 feet. So, so those are not that appropriate for people visiting a restaurant at that location. It's probably better to have the restaurant in the.
It's much smaller, I don't think, by the time you put the kitchen in there.
That may be a good reason to do it. See, especially if you were to do it as you're saying, if it was a green market type of takeout where you deliver and prepare food that basically gets taken out, and you don't have seats, that reduces your parking requirement. You know, you're the one triggering the parking, you don't even know what tenant you want yet and you're triggering the parking problem because of seats.
I apologize, Mr. Collins, but Corporal Morris probably does have to go to work, go back to work, so.
I hope he's working, I hope he's getting paid now.
I wouldn't be here if I wasn't.
Yes, Mike, yes.
I don't think we need to be litigating all this right now, but Corporal, it's heavy traffic right now. Is there an increased number of accidents in that current intersection coming out of that driveway as we speak? Or is it, have you seen an increase in it? Or is, what's compared to other accidents or incident reports that are filed?
Not specifically coming out of that driveway. In the intersection, yes, there's accidents there regularly.
Up to the light, correct? But not coming in and out of.
Not coming out of there. If we do, it's rare, it's fender benders just because of the amount of traffic and congestion. I think a lot of times, I've witnessed personally, cars trying to make the left to go south on 181 and ultimately have, they can't, so they make the right and, I don't know where they go, but. But yeah, I mean, the intersection itself has a lot of traffic.
I understand your concerns with the safety hazards if they, you know, connect the two parking lots, putting the safety features in, if they, you know, whether it's the walkways or shared parking going back and forth. I think that's it, I think you answered the question, thank you.
So, I have a quick question. So, with regard to the types of restaurants that are being proposed, where they're, you know, pickup-style restaurants? And obviously, the more people who are picking up, the more successful the business is, the more people are gonna be going in and out to pick up. Do you, do you feel that there's a concern there with a lot more individuals in and out trying to pick up their food and move on, and move on to the day?
Yeah, with a restaurant, just, I mean, just based off of everyday life, yeah. An in-and-out restaurant is a lot busier than someone coming, sitting down for an hour and a half and that car leaving.
Right.
An hour and a half later, that's not gonna create the traffic that it would. But, being that what we're told, that it's gonna be in and out, quick pickup, people rushing in, rushing out, coming in and out, it's gonna create more traffic, yes. Because you're not gonna have to, people sit at the table waiting, just run in, grab their food and leave, so. And again, we don't know what we're.
The use is permitted, I mean, I get it.
No, I understand, I was just asking his opinion on what he thought would be, you know, would be more appropriate since we were talking about the potentials of maybe modifying the thought process behind what was going to be where.
Like I said before, I understand, you know, he said several times last meeting as well, the use is permitted when the building was originally built and zoned, correct? So, I don't think if this was gonna be built and zoned now, it wouldn't, I don't think it'd be zoned for what they're wanting to do at this present time. Just because of the congestion now, more so than years in the past and the traffic.
Or if it was, the parking lot would be reconfigured to accommodate and the curb cuts would be reconfigured to accommodate, I'm assuming.
I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask you a question? What about all the other restaurants on that strip from the beginning to the end? Do you have the same issue with them as far as parking is concerned? Or people getting out of those restaurants, like Cafe Perro, I guess? Do you have the same issue or just that building?
Cafe Perro is just one separate restaurant. We have had accidents there, yes, but, I mean, like I said, there are accidents and they're all over town. But, it's one restaurant with, it's not two separate restaurants. We come, you know, it's also sit-down, larger building, larger parking lot for the one, one restaurant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Morris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Yasin, based on your conversation with Mr. Collins, it seems like you and your professionals were going back and forth on a bunch of things. Went from having two restaurants to one restaurant, there was a lot of discussions. Do you want to give us an update of?
Well, I mean, the applicant had indicated that he would agree with one restaurant and one retail. And the fact is, we did quick calculations, I mean, if the entire space was retail, you still might need a parking variance because of, you know, the square footage. I mean, it's, and that would be not using, because it appears that the board's professionals want to discount unless we graded out the back and put retaining walls in to discount using any of that in the back for parking. Is that a fair statement?
I think unless, unless I'm missing something, the only, correct me if I'm wrong, the only way into the basement is through that depressed area in the back? So, my point is, you'd have to come up with some other way to get into the basement if you still want to have the basement used, if you were gonna fill that area.
We could create, from those two restaurants, we can open, you know, downstairs if that is a solution to prevent people from going towards the back. We could do that.
I think you'd have to look at that, your architect would have to check it out as far as safe means of ingress and egress and what have you, that would be required by the building code. I don't have that answer right here tonight. But I know, but I know when I was out there and I went down in that lower area, that's why I remembered that door to get to the basement. So, if you fill that in so that you've got a more gradual grade, because there's a retaining wall between the upper parking lot and the lower one, I think you'd have to figure out how you're gonna reconfigure access to the basement.
Yeah, but the drain is part of this whole, you know, water flow.
I understand, but I think, I think if you fill that in, in essence, that back wall of the building becomes part of a retaining wall, if you will. So, you'd have to evaluate that to see if structurally it would work. You could always raise the inlet up as far as water into that dry well, if in fact that's what it is, and I'm not doubting you. But it's a situation where you gotta look at that and see what you can design.
Okay. I just, my point is about the two restaurants versus the retail and the, no matter what happens, no matter what retail you're gonna bring, you're gonna have, you know, the employee parking and customers coming in. You might, you know, open just a takeout grocery store and you're gonna have more customers than a restaurant would. You know, even without the kitchen, you can have a lot more customers, and that's retail. I mean, I can put refrigeration and just say, hey, come grab your, you know, hummus and, you know, other sandwiches, ready to pick up. And you'll have even more customers coming in, it depends on the business. And I thought that having two small restaurants without a lot of seating, and these days with Uber Eats and the, you know, DoorDash, et cetera, I think the traffic is gonna move, but I don't think it's in, like, it's not gonna be 50 customers at a time. It's not gonna happen. Because there's time where you have to prepare the food and you're gonna give the customer and say, you know, you're gonna pick it up in 10 minutes. They're gonna come in in 10 minutes. You're not giving five customers in 10 minutes because you're not gonna cook that, that fast. That's what happened with Greenlife. People come in and they, they actually, some are picking up the food, but most of them, they call ahead of time and the stuff is ready, they take it and they go. And I do have like over, you know, 250 customers a day, and I don't have that problem. If you go to the parking lot, yes, sometimes I have, you know, 10, 15 customers at a time, but most of the time, maybe eight customers. Because a lot of customers, you know, even though they shop for groceries, you know, they come at different times, you know, so. You guys know better than I do.
If I may, jump in on the conversation, just for a quick question. I heard during this conversation that a shared parking easement would be a potential solution. Or at least accommodate any of these concerns and overflow.
Yes.
Correct? Would the easement run with the current tenant uses? Would that be a, an agreement between property owner A and B of both parcels for their tenants? Or they would be subject to and run only with the tenant uses that are currently, the easements being put in place for?
It would be a permanent.
It would be, wait here, it would be a permanent easement. It would not be tenant compliant or reliant, because you couldn't do that because the tenants could potentially, you know, change every couple of years.
And I understand, you started the conversation, I was bringing this as a solution.
Yeah.
I mean, both properties are owned individually, they're standalone properties. They don't kinda share anything else. Minus this potential easement to accommodate your suggested uses.
I mean, you know, the reality of it is, is you could probably come up with any combination of potential uses on both of these properties and you may not have enough parking. Unfortunately, when, you know, forgetting back when the Littles had the building approved in the 70s, more recently, when there was, you know, a site plan amendment done, you know, this, I don't know whether the issue was glossed over or perhaps at the time, nobody was giving it that much thought. I mean, parking is gonna be, is gonna be tight here. I mean, perhaps the thing to do is kind of treat it as one functioning property, even though it's two different lots, and, you know, consider parking that way.
And the easement would flow both ways, correct, in the future?
Yeah, I mean, we.
If their tenant moves out and you get a new tenant that needs overflow in reverse, you're gonna have a kind of a common.
The original intent was to have 61 have the availability of going on to 57 for additional parking. It's easy enough to change to make it, you know, interchangeable. So that if, you know, the lot, excuse me, 57 Sparta Avenue gets a tenant that has a higher, he gets the restaurant, for instance, they would then be able to park over on Lot 61 for overflow. I mean, that's, that's easy enough to do.
I've seen another solution where you can valet for the one restaurant. If you had an issue, maybe a third-party agreement off-site. You got, you got some other uses across the street that have ample amount of open parking that's underutilized. So, I'm just coming up with a solution, try to, regardless whether it's these uses, future uses, you got, you're gonna have this challenge, whether it's retail or a restaurant, the parking's gotta, you came to us with a, kind of in this discussion, with a solution, kind of do shared parking overflow. And maybe you could accommodate these other issues with some other third-party arrangement.
And I have tried to look for the owners of the property behind me, and I would love to acquire it, so it makes things much easier and we develop that whole property. But I have, I have not been able to do that, so.
That was gonna be my question, was that 40-foot easement was put in before the bypass went in, you know? So, it probably isn't even necessary to that property anymore. If you could, if you could get in contact with them, maybe they would vacate that easement.
I agree, because I don't even know if you could build back there anyway, given the topography and, you know, the soits rock and everything else, so.
So, a quick question.
Just, I'm gonna interrupt you, we didn't get Catherine's statement for this witness yet. Before we come to the DA's, I'll open up to the question for DA's, but I do want to get our professionals first.
Thank you, I only had one question related to parking, but it came out through the testimony of Officer Morris, so it was satisfied. Thank you.
Okay, Celeste, floor is yours.
Thanks. So, if we were to look at these properties, these two separate properties as one cross easement, is this something that can be remedied with the simple restriping of both lots to accommodate what the parking requirement would be for both spaces? I mean, I guess that's a question for the engineers.
As far as the parking in the back in what I call the sump area, if you will, for lack of any other term for that area, I think, excuse me, that's something that their engineer has to look at and their architect. Because, again, I understand what you're talking about to fill that, to correct the grade, but that opens up some other issues as far as the architecture goes for ingress and egress to the basement of the building and safe passageway out. So, they'd have to look at that, number one. Number two, they have to pave additional area, curb additional area. I think the applicant's engineer had scaled off some area, roughly about 300 and some odd square feet. It was a little less than 500 square feet by his calculations. So, my point is, since we're understanding that that probably is a dry well tonight, that may have to be enlarged with an additional dry well to accommodate the additional runoff that would be created by that impervious coverage. So, it's not just restriping in that area.
Okay.
And, again, I brought up the fact that when I was out there in the orthopedic tenant on the 57 Sparta Avenue side, I noted specifically, he added every parking space, those signs reserved for his use only. And I understand that's not what they were agreeing with the landlord and the owner. But I think that's something that has to get worked out so we don't end up with a lot of tenant disputes as far as who's parking where. And I'm sure as the owner, you could take care of that, but it's one of those things where it's just not restriping, I don't think.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Again, I think everybody asked what I, everyone's asked what I, what I had questions about as well with the parking.
Okay. I guess as I mentioned last time, I had serious concern with the grade. And even if employees are parking down there, I thought it was dangerous for them, especially in the winter with snow or sleet. So, the grading is a concern. Another concern is the opening of a car door for spots 20, 21, 22. Unless you can, maybe when, in 2009, when you came to the planning board, did they approve them as spots or did just somebody just kind of stripe, put a couple? did just somebody just kind of stripe, put a couple splashes of paint there? Because you can't open a door, so if you have two adults pulling in, one of them absolutely cannot get out of the car.
We, we did not since two thousand nine stripe anything new. It was there when I came for the approvals at the time. I did not change anything. I did not-
They're even barely striped. But if you can prove that they were there beforehand, otherwise, I personally don't think that that's an appropriate spot for parking, because you can't open a door.
I, I would look and see.
Okay.
Whatever it takes to rectify any issues that becomes less of a safety, you know, becomes a safety issue, I'm willing to, you know, to rectify it, maybe with some walls like Michael suggested. The other thing about the steep driveway, if we, if we shut it down or close it, for example, and fill it out, I, I do believe it becomes more of a hazard, because if there's people downstairs in the Sparta Pharmacy and there is fire, they can't get out.
That's something to consider.
You know, I don't think we should do that. I think we should leave it the way it is, put up some walls, you know, for the parking, to make sure that the grade, maybe towards the end of the parking lot or the end of the property, and be able to, you know, to fix it that way, you know? And that's, and, and even considering taking that play area in the back and just pave that and maybe create better parking spaces in there.
Well, that was the other concern I brought up last time, and I appreciated that Corporal Morris also brought it up, because there's children play toys in there, and you indicated children live in those apartments. So to make that now, where people are coming in and out for pickup of restaurant food and everything else, and in and out, and having them cross from the door, their back door, to their play area is a huge concern. So I just think you need to really think about each of the scenarios before you come back. I, I don't want you to think we're saying, oh, just come back and it's gonna be approved. But I would like to see some kind of approval that you had at one point for spots twenty-one, twenty, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two on the side of the building here, where the poles stick up and you can't open a door, and then there's only fourteen feet in the easement. So until you can get rid of the easement by the property behind it, that easement does exist, and fourteen feet is not the allowable number. So just keep that in mind, too.
Well, the easement, I mean, there's nobody going to the back property right now, so.
But that doesn't matter. It's still an easement, and it could be, until you have it resolved. So we still have to look at that. Just have to rethink the whole thing. That's all.
I, I, I mean, look, there's a couple of things. I mean, with respect to the, the tenants and their kids, I mean, you could just-
One, one of the tenants, her, her, I guess kids are grownups, they seventeen, eighteen-year-old. The other one, I do believe she has, you know, younger kids. So one of the tenants don't have any young kids, that's less than sixteen years old, and the other one does. So one of the tenants have-
But I mean, the reality of it is, they shouldn't be playing in a parking lot, anyway.
Not in the parking lot. Have you seen it? They have to cross the parking lot to play in the grassy area. So it's striped back there, and you can't have cars pulling in and out and in and out with kids, unless you're putting a fence maybe around the playground. But to me, it's a dangerous situation that-
We could do that, or bollards could, could do that.
And you don't know who's gonna move in, so.
Yeah, I could, I could do that.
But you could just put bollards on, or fence, whatever you want.
No, we can put a fence if it's safer for the kids, sure.
Yeah.
Many?
Yep. Let me start with, I empathize with the situation here. I was, I know-
Thank you.
We also, I, I would love to see businesses come in there. I'm sure, almost as much as you would. So, you know, and, you know, maybe it's not gonna be this exact plan or tonight, but I hope that you keep thinking through this, you know, in the future. You know, not many new concerns that weren't mentioned already. I just, the idea of the cross easement and the shared parking, I'm assuming that would have to be a permanent agreement in the deeds for both buildings, because say, for some reason, you sell fifty-seven, or something large comes in or it needs all the parking. So there needs to be an accounting for that. Well, with this, these, these restaurants, or whatever goes in here in the pharmacy, that has already utilized, you know, sixty or eighty percent of the parking of the two lots. So there has to be some kind of permanent accounting for this down the road, if that was ever to be the case.
Yes. I, I'll agree. I'll agree to that.
What was, what was presented to Mr. Collins was a recordable easement, so it would be with the chain of title for both properties.
With the understanding that could affect what happens later with property fifty-seven, in terms of the available parking for those tenants, correct?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it probably enhances the value of both properties by having the availability of, of, you know, additional spaces, you know, with the understanding that, you know, it's, parking is gonna be limited.
Yeah.
And, and the reality of it is, I mean, if you had a successful business, I think people would probably park on the other lot anyway and walk over with, without an easement, so.
Yeah. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rockstar? Yep. Again, I empathize with your, with your situation.
Thank you.
You know, I think the reason we're mostly going over parking here is, is just because we know, you know, and we've had it in other places where, you know, you start getting issues between tenants, you know, over the parking, and, you know, my, my concern is also even a further bleed over into other properties that you don't own, you know, where we start, the police department start getting complaints about people parking there to utilize your spaces. So we wanna make sure you have enough, have enough parking for the uses that, that you want. And that's why we're, I, I know we're, we're spending a lot of time on this, but I think it's, it's the most important issue here, so.
One consideration I would do, I mean, getting approved for two restaurants, I would start with one, let's say the Portuguese restaurant and the Flex Nutrition place, and I will wait to see if there's a lot of traffic. I'm willing to wait six months, a year, before I rent out the other one, and then see how it goes, and I can come back to the board and say, okay, I'm gonna open the second restaurant, because there's not a lot. I mean, every businesses are susceptible to failure with the first two years. Not every restaurant you're gonna put in there is gonna have two hundred cars a day, not everyone. But, you know, I'm, I'm trying to use the property, you know, both on my financial planning, to see what the return on investment for me. But I, I have failed over the past four, five years to get tenants in there. It's, it's not easy. These days, retail with Amazon and everybody else, everybody orders in line, you know? They, they'll sell milk at Amazon, you know, with Whole Foods. What am I supposed to do? I mean, keep it vacant? And I, I, I do believe having restaurants in those two spots, I think it'll be great for the town. I think it's great for the residents. It, it gives them different opportunities. You know, but I'm willing to work with the town in every way I can, but I need to get tenants into those spots. Thank you.
Number?
Yeah, thank you. We would very much like you to get tenants into both of those spots. That's, that's a very, it's a very prime location, but as the, the Colonel said, it's, it's very busy, and it's only going to get busier through time. So we have, I think in a lot of these applications, we really have to look to the future.
I understand.
Right. And we love to eat in Sparta, everyone, so we would love to have more variety. But, but also, I ha- I share the same concern as some of the other friends here, that, that the fifty-seven building in back, there is the play yard with the trampoline, with the bicycle, with the pi- the patio set and chairs, and the little scooter, pink scooter, the outdoor bar coming, coming out. And when I visited there, I can only share my observations from a couple of days. At noon time, every single spot was filled in back of fifty-seven. There were eight cars parked in back of sixty-one, and a connecting row between the two properties in back. On the sides of both, there were four cars that could have held six. There were nine cars going around where the Sparta Pharmacy was. So that, so, so that's what I, what I see. You know, I see danger, okay? I see danger, and one of my commitments is to try to protect our community, as well as encourage good food and a good cuisine. You know, that's, it's, and, and that's, you know, something I've been wanting to share.
I understand. Thank you. As far as the playground, it's very easily removable. I never authorized a tenant to put any toys in there, so I can pick up the phone and say, Catherine, you gotta move this out, or I can, I can move it out, or we can put a fence around. You know, as far as the parking, I do believe this Sparta Pharmacy is the culprit in to having so many cars, you know? And I can talk to them and tell them, look, you wanna do training, do it somewhere else. I didn't have this location for training or, you know, to have meetings in the basement, you know? As far as the traffic, when I purchased the property, we didn't have a lot of traffic, but now there is traffic, and it's gonna continue to increase day after day. I'm not gonna disagree with you. There's nothing around it, because the whole environment of where people live are coming to the suburbs, because they cannot afford the prices of houses in Secocas or, you know, in West New York. They're gonna come up this way, and the traffic will increase. But having a business, that's what it's all about. It's about, you know, business owner's gonna make more money about it, but at the same time, I understand your concern about the traffic, and we'll do the best we can in order to, you know, to manage it. Whether in, dealing with a restaurant owner and say, look, you're gonna have to organize your website to say, you know, like, every ten minutes have one customer to come in, instead of every two minutes. I mean, there is ways in technology that you can arrange and make sure that, it's like the cannabis people. With cannabis, this is the way, you know, the, the state is dealing with it. They, they have eleven minutes maximum for every customer. These are the regulations. Eleven minutes, you're in and you're out. You can't even stay in the parking lot anymore. There's a security guard that goes out there and watches these people. Once they pick up their, you know, goods, they're out of the door. Eleven minutes, you're out of the parking lot. So there is ways of hopefully dealing with it in the future, and that's what I personally do with a lot of different businesses, so.
Yeah. One thing that you mentioned was paving the parking lot more in back of fifty-seven. Did I hear you correctly? That, I wouldn't recommend, you know, creating more impervious surface.
That's fine.
You know, anywhere.
Wait, wait. I mean, we can't have it both ways. I mean, we might need to create more impervious coverage to, to create additional parking. I mean, it's, it's, it's not fair to the applicant to say, well, you need more parking, but we don't want you to increase the impervious surface. I mean, I, I think there has to be a balance here in order to make this site, because quite frankly, we're doing the math, and I know we're doing it on the fly, and that's, but fully retail in this entire building, you probably don't have enough parking. So, I, I mean, I, I get the concern, but under the stormwater regs, there are ways you can handle stormwater that comes from additional impervious surface.
Well, Mike, I don't agree with you that you can't do both. You have to, you have to comply with both, all of the standards, and if you don't, you need to relieve from it, which you're gonna request, I guess. But, but my suggestion to you before, and I'm gonna make it again, I think we're wasting our time, because I think you have to do some engineering, is you have two lots. The two lots have some capabilities here. They have two separate driveways. I'm not sure you need a second driveway. I'm not sure you need that wall to be a cliff at the, on the lot that has the two apartments on it. You could redesign your whole site and figure out what your cap is on retail, what your cap is on restaurant. Both uses have been permitted in the zone for fifty years. They're still permitted in the zone. The problem you have is, you're bump, bumping up against the cap on coverage. You're over the cap. It's supposed to be something like forty percent. You're at seventy percent. You're trying to increase it to seventy-one point five percent, and you're way over on square footage for the parking proposed for two restaurants. So why not redesign both lots, deal with your current tenants and your future tenants, clean up your parking in both the front and the back, organize your play area, if you're gonna have one, with a sidewalk. You don't need, I don't, you don't show an easement to the neighbor next door, at least not on your surveys.
What do you, I mean?
I mean-
The other?
The next one.
The next one over?
The next one down, which is the-
Yeah, I don't, there isn't any, yeah, there isn't any, but-
The dry cleaners. In your control.
Yeah.
He owns both with his wife. Figure out a way to get the best design and the maximum square footage that you can get, with whatever variance you wanna ask for. I think you shouldn't ask for the variance for the coverage. I don't think you should, but you might be able to use some of the green space of lot, of the, of the orthopedic site to balance your total coverage. You might, you might be able to get under seventy percent.
I have a question.
I mean, you have yard space. I, I, look, I don't, I'm not your engineer, but those two lots are inextricably intertwined forever. That's why you bought them.
This whole section, because if you look at it from Google Earth-
I agree with you.
There's-
So, design it.
All of these site plans, all of these parking lots run right into the other.
I agree with you. That's why you should, that's why you should modernize design, modernize the ingress and egress, modernize the crosswalks, modernize the parking spaces, and maybe you can have restaurant.
And, and the question is, what happens after the design if we still don't have enough coverage?
You, you, you can never use something for something that's not compliant, all right? But if you can get a variance, I don't recommend it here, but that's what you gotta deal with. But you're in control, sir, of your two lots and your two buildings. And I, I definitely think, for example, that if you don't wanna fill in the back of the Sparta Pharmacy property, because you wanna keep the ingress and egress, then you should not be overusing that back area.
My concern is the fire hazard. You, you-
I agree with you. I totally agree with you. And I remember that the pharmacy does use the basement for their, I think their lunchroom and their storage. And I believe that was approved by the board. So I don't know what's going on with training down there or whatever. That doesn't sound like something that was originally approved. But, look, they're a good tenant, they're a good use, they're a great business, and we, we certainly don't want you to lose your, your pharmacy, right? You don't wanna lose your pharmacy, so, as a tenant. But you're in control of all that space, and you're in control of how much impervious coverage you want to keep and how much you want to add. And, and that becomes a cap on your parking.
I honestly don't see how much we can redesign to be able to come up to a solution where you, you know, you provide enough coverage. I don't, I don't see it.
Well, then maybe you can't have restaurants.
Why not?
Because you're not complying, and parking.
Okay, so you, what you're suggesting is just have a retail?
That, that's what's allowed. You're complying as to your current site plan for both lots.
If I open a retail, I don't need to come in front of the board?
That's right. But you do have to go to the Minor Site Plan Subcommittee for the change in tenant.
Understand.
From retail to retail, from vitamin store to widgets store.
Mike, do you have any questions?
I just wanna make a statement. I'm on a hundred percent in agreement with what I've heard on this parking discussion. It seems at some points it's subjective, and I think they have a team of professionals that could figure it out, work some solutions to accommodate whatever your use is, whether you're gonna go retail, restaurant, if you can make it work. I think it's up to your professionals to maybe reconsider based on what you heard today. But I hope that we did not come across objective, and- But I hope that we did not come across objective and we're, as other colleagues have have said here, we're sensitive to the safety issues. I think that's resolvable. The play area is resolvable. There's a lot of resolve, resolvable things here. So I just, speaking for myself, it's not necessarily reflective of my my comments. Thank you.
I agree. I 100% agree. I think it, I think it's a matter of your, I 100% agree. I think it's a matter of your engineer to look at both of your properties together and try to to work up a solution that's that's viable to, so that you can you can be accommodated with what it is that you're looking for.
Understood, thank you. All right, I I think we get the message. We'll carry it. We're not gonna carry it till the next meeting. We'll carry it. I don't know if we can, when's your next meeting? The next meeting is pretty close, 14 days, so you're probably looking at, we're thinking of trying to have a meeting, although no, we, I don't think we could do that.
No, the next meeting's the 6th, isn't it?
Yeah.
The 6th is three weeks.
Three weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we gotta have, if they're gonna do revised plans, we really gotta see them.
Mr. Collins, before-
10 days before.
Before they leave, do we have to open up the comments to the public?
No, no, because they're gonna carry, you can, but we're gonna carry the hearing, it sounds like, because they're gonna revise their plans. So, and we don't, we meet on the 6th. We're very busy that night.
I don't think the 6th is an option.
I don't think so either. Also, it wouldn't be good for you because it means that you'd wait, you might wait like two hours and not get hurt on the 6th.
On the 6th, okay.
I think, we're trying to have a meeting on the 20th, but I don't think we have Catherine and people-
Well, because that's the league.
That is the league. A lot of people are away. The next one is December 4th. I mean, if you're thinking about revising your drawings to incorporate the other lot and you'll have to make that decision on your own, that is an amendment that will require a notice within-
Well, we already did that.
Even for that lot?
Yes.
Oh, okay, oh, that's good.
Yeah.
So we could carry that to a date certain. But that, we really do need your revised plans in really 21 days before the hearing because Dave and Catherine have to rewrite written reports reviewing them, especially if you're gonna include the other lot. Is that what you're thinking of doing as far as you know?
Going to, yeah, I I mean, we'll have to talk about it, but so it seems that we carry it to the 4th.
The 4th and then, and that is, that is a, that is maybe a good night because we do have, although we have a master plan public hearing, we will already, you know, you'll go after that.
Ms. Fox, do you see an opening in the schedule on, based on our current agendas?
I think 12:04 would be the best right now, like Tom is suggesting.
Okay.
You know, and and the more you can get it to be compliant with the ordinance. So I think that that's practical. December 4th, the next one is probably January, whatever, first Wednesday in January.
We actually have 12:18.
Oh, 12:18.
Yeah.
So that's an option.
Carry it to the 4th.
Wanna do that? Okay, so the chairman may wanna get input from the public before you finish tonight, even if it's just whatever questions are-
Anyone from the public wish to comment on tonight's testimony?
Thank you.
Jen, were you previously sworn on this one?
I was.
Okay. Please state your name and go ahead.
Sure, Jennifer Jenny Derrick's 20, tap into Sparta. I did have a question. We're talking quite a bit about the easement that runs between the two properties. Looking on, became familiar with that easement because of the fluss, the previous fluss application, at which point both properties, Lot 1 and 2, not related to you except for that easement. It shows a 40-foot driveway and if you look on the GIS, which is, which is what I did, the the easement belongs to Lot 2 in the back. So I don't understand how we're talking about eating into and notwithstanding the fact that there are already parking spaces there. How is it possible that you are eating into or it's be, it's allowed to to use that easement which belongs to Lot 2 in the back, even though there may be an easement by necessity, I assume there is? But how does that allow for construction of parking spaces or walls or paving, more impervious coverage? To Ernie's point, he he asked, why would they even need that easement because the bypass is there now? But a previous, years ago, a business proposed for that lot and it was denied because of access to 517. They would not allow for access to 517, which means you have to have that easement. So how, that's, so my question primarily is, how is this proper, these two properties on either side of this easement that belongs to the property in the back, how are they allowed to use that, eat into it for, with parking spaces and so forth? Also, the easement that-
This, that's a question really for Mike Salvaggi and-
Okay.
His engineer. So, Mike, do you have an answer for it?
Well, I mean, we, the, we've parked near the easement. There may be a small portion of it, but the the easement itself is still available to those people. I mean, we're not, we're not creating parking spaces. Nothing's been proposed to deny the ability to get up to that lot if, to the balance of that lot if necessary, so.
Just looking at the map as it's expressed on the GIS, it shows the lot, the easement lines going actually right up against the two buildings, which covers the two lot parking spaces, 20, 21, and 22, as they exist today. The language of the easement specifically says that, and this is, this is language of a cross easement between Lot 1 and 2 in the back. So again, not specifically on your properties, but it does address the need to allow for for unfettered access, including tractor trailers to be able to navigate that parking, that driveway. So this is an easement that exists on these other two properties. It's clearly spelled out in Section B, 1 and 2, parking access, site easements, mutual reciprocal but non-exclusive ingress and egress easements and so on and so on. And it does talk about this provision should also provide for free movement of tractor-trailer delivery trucks. So if you're putting, if you're counting on putting parking spaces along those buildings, I understand some of them already exist and possibly talking about paving more in the back to create more spaces, how does that square with this easement as it exists now for Lot 2? That's the, that's, that's the primary part of my question.
We would, first of all, we're not proposing to block that. It will still be free access. You're right, it is right up against the the buildings as as it is, but if you read that literally, you couldn't do anything on either, either one of these lots. And we've used it. It's been used that way for as long as you've owned it. So I I think we, but we're not doing, again, we're not doing anything to deny if that property ever in the back got developed, the ability to use this area, the easement area to get access to it.
I understand what you're saying, that it's, it's practice, that it's been going on and on because it's back, basically woods back there, there's no development back there. But to say literally it belongs, you know, that this is an easement, but isn't that the point? Isn't, why would you not, why would you not follow what it, what it says? And I I question how the parking spaces that are already there are allowed to exist with the easement that belongs to Lot 2, when the, the line goes right through those parking spaces. So to the, to the board's consideration, how do you count those spaces when they may have to go away if and when that property ever gets developed? And and it, fluss may come up with a project, they've got their project going. They have, they have rights to access that driveway according to the easements as they stand right now for lots 1 and 2. That 40, 40-unit apartment building is already approved. They could be driving down that way. It's possible because of this, because of this easement. So just something to consider when coming, when calculating and developing future plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arx. Anyone else from the public?
So, Mr. Chairman, we should carry this to December 4th at 7:00 PM. No further notices. Mike, did you have anything further to add or anything? Okay. So the the application of Remes, I'm sorry, Remeson Company LLC will be carried without additional notices to December 4th at this meeting room at 7:00 PM.
I would just like to add one comment if I can.
Sure.
Just, I would, I would encourage you, look forward to seeing you back again. Again, we, there's a lot of empathy going on here too, that we know it's a difficult situation and wanna see things come in there. We wanna see businesses be there for the community, so.
And Mike, would you just confirm your applicant carries the application and the timeframe for action until, let's say, the end of December in case it snows or something like that? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is other board business. Couple things I wanna talk about. We have a few applications that currently are being reviewed for completeness. So we have to try to fit them into the calendar and there's only a few more meetings left for the rest of the year in 2024. I know there's been a discussion about possibly re-adding a meeting on November 20th. I have not taken a poll among the members of the planning board to see if we have a quorum. Mr. Collins and Mr. Simmons, you both mentioned that you are available on that night?
Yes.
Ms. Armad, you're not?
On the 20th, I possibly will be at the league, likely will be at the league.
Likely will be at the league. And what about any of your colleagues?
We have a booth down there, so likely most of our licensed professionals will be also at the league.
Okay. When will you know 100% certain and?
I can find out tomorrow.
That'd be great. And then for the members of the board, would anyone not be available on November 20th?
I'll be at the league.
League.
We would have three missing, Justin and Brian. I can find out with them. Three missing, but we get two, so it's really just one off of tonight. Would we still have a quorum with that?
Yeah, you just need five.
Yeah.
And we, you know, I would be, I'm comfortable, there's an application, Lake Mohawk Tennis Club for adding pickleball courts where there's tennis. I think there's some change in the fencing or something. It's kind of minor. I don't really think we would absolutely need Catherine for such a minor site plan. It's actually a minor site plan and Dave has done, done the completeness review. That probably could be done on the 20th if, without anyone from the planning consulting firm. I mean, I'd love it if they could be here, but I don't think it's, I don't think they need to be here for such a minor application.
What's the process of getting that added?
So that would be, it is a special meeting because you were go, you canceled for November 20th because it's the league. So Dori and I just do a notice, she does a notice to the newspapers of a special meeting for November 20th at 7:00 PM. And some of you would not be able to be here, so you might not want there to be a meeting, but I don't think there's, Dori, do you remember anything else? I think it's like tennis club.
We have two other applications that are being reviewed. I believe, Mr. Simmons, I think we just got another one that was deemed complete, correct? That we have to place on an agenda. So we have two pending and I believe we have two that still have time.
And we have them coming back-
Yes.
Have them coming back, so that's-
Five.
Five.
And the environmental-
Open space.
Open space.
PDRM 2.
Yeah, PDRM 2. So there's quite a bit. I think the special meeting would be worthwhile.
The one I know that I reviewed involves basically a side yard setback for two sheds, so.
So if we do do it, my preference would be that we have those simple ones so that those of us who can't be here and who weren't planning to be here aren't gonna miss out in contributing to anything major, if that's possible.
Can we do the fireside apartments that day?
That's, that's the one where they're basically on the upper level, taking an area and making an additional apartment number seven.
Bottom level.
And and reconfiguring somewhat existing apartment number six. There's no site improvements. The biggest thing when I wrote the report on that one was for them to provide verification that they still have the 15 parking spaces that were called out in the original resolution. I believe there were two garages, three spaces right by the garages, and another 10 spaces that they have some sort of a lease agreement, just to verify that's still in place. But as far as any site improvements or changes, they did not, they're actually asking for a site plan waiver. It's just interior work.
Thank you. So, Mr. Collins and Ms. Fox, you'll take care of the notice and-
Yeah, Dori takes care of the notice. That one, the fireside apartments or whatever, I don't know, we might need Catherine for that. We certainly should have her review it. I'm not sure you can have an apartment on the first floor in the TCC zone without it being low and moderate. And I didn't, I have not reviewed it yet.
I haven't reviewed it yet, but regardless if I'm present or anyone from my office is present, there will be a review memo issued for any applications so that you do have some guidance-
Great.
-planning perspective.
Right, and Dave, Dave could review it and supplement his opinions. He's a planner as well as an engineer. But I just wanted you to know that that one might have an issue that I don't, I'm not sure you can have an apartment on the first floor unless you make it low and moderate. Did they propose to make it low and moderate? I think you can do it if you make it low and moderate. I'm gonna say it that way, which would be great, but I don't think people volunteer that too quickly, so. I may be requiring that, so.
Anyone else have any other board business? Okay, next is open to the public. Members of the public have an opportunity. You can comment on matters not on the agenda and matters not relating to a hearing or an application for development. Would anyone like to speak from the public?
Jenny Derrick's tapping to Sparta. This tangentially relates to diamond chip, but only insofar as the request that I made at the town council meeting, Dean, I think you were there when I asked what if any and could we possibly, Mr. Stoner was at that meeting, Dave, have somebody from the township present at the meetings with Mr. Copenall when he is negotiating with-
Jen, the the board cannot talk about diamond chip at all. So you-
Okay, well, I'll just-
I would recommend, you've made your request to the Township Council. That's a different subject. Township Council can make determinations of whether it-
But it really is a planning board issue?
No, it is not a planning board issue. And, but a bottom line is, you cannot, we can, the board cannot talk with you about the diamond chip matter because it's a pending application, it's also in litigation and some of the board members are ineligible, so. Your, your request has been made to the Township Council and that's-
Dean, has this request been brought down to-
Should not be talking about diamond chip.
Dean, I'm, I'm asking about the request that I made at council. Has that been pushed to this board?
Dean should not be talking about the diamond chip application because he is ineligible.
Is that something that you consent to the diamond chip sub-board?
We should, we should, this board should not be speaking about diamond chip. We do not talk about any pending applications at the planning board except in their hearing and this is not their hearing.
This is a procedural matter that's already being discussed at the county.
I'm gonna ask you to stop now and I've given my advice, so.
Anything else, Ms. Arx?
That's it.
Mark Scott, Nine Pueblo Parkway. I'm standing here hoping that the planning board will take seriously hiring a litigator to help Mr. Collins fight diamond chip. G R Dan O'Halloran Firm, representing diamond chip, has 78 lawyers and 19 litigators. Diamond chip has already defeated Mr. Collins, most like, most recently in the Sparta Facebook Diamond Chip Warehouse case. The face, Sparta Facebook Warehouse case is now being discussed in- The face, Sparta Facebook Warehouse case is now being discussed in legal circles and real estate development circles throughout New Jersey. Here's a quote from Benjamin, Benjamin Nadell, an attorney at Saul Ewing, LLP, a firm with 470 attorneys and 120 real estate specialists. Quote, "For land use attorneys, this recent Sparta decision will result in major impacts to New Jersey public hearings and the MLUL. It will be very interesting to see how the approval process plays out. Well done, Adam Garcia." Adam Garcia is one of the 19 litigators with Diamondship's law firm, G.R. Dan O'Halloran. Adam was named Best Lawyers One to Watch in 2025. We'll probably see him again. This case has opened the door for developers throughout the state to challenge and destroy planning boards and zoning boards.
The board can't talk about-
This article has-
Mark.
This article here that I hold in my hand-
Mr. Scott.
...refers to multiple errors and shortcomings undertaken in the defense-
Excuse me, Mr. Scott?
Mr. Scott, we cannot talk about the Diamondship case. You've heard that before.
No, we're talking about the township of Sparta and adequate representation.
You're talking about the Diamondship application, which this board will not be talking about tonight and is not part of a hearing tonight.
Okay. I don't know, one more word about Diamondship. I'm going to talk about-
You're talking about something that the board can't talk about, Mark?
I'm talking about possibly getting you some help in the litigation field.
I'm sure that my firm and I can handle the litigation, Mr. Scott.
Well, you know, Mr. Collins, you've been here 42 years and-
Excuse me, Mr. Scott, Vice Chair Enright was trying to speak.
Mr. Scott, I think the overall comment you're trying to make is you're suggesting that we look into getting a litigator for Mr. Collins or on behalf of the planning board?
Yeah, I think that would be a great idea to help us. I mean, there's, you know, we, we can do better and we must do better. This is our town, and we're on, we're on, you know, we're up against the wall here. And we've lost once, and we, we, he could, why not get the best litigator we could possibly get? Why not represent this town? We must insert, you know, insist on a top experienced litigator. The top. Why can't we get someone from New York City, from, I mean, Bedminster got someone from New York City, and guess what? They won!
I'm-
We can win!
I'm Bedminster's-
We can win!
I'm Bedminster's Land Use Board Attorney, Mr. Scott, so I think you might, I think you might as well stop. So that's my recommendation.
Anything short of hiring a specialized, experienced litigator is malfeasance on the part of this board. Money has been set aside, there's no reason not to.
Just read my resume, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Before we adjourn-
Let me respond to Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins has been here-
No, sir.
Four times in 42 years. That's how I looked into your resume. Four times in 42 years.
I've handled hundreds of pieces of litigation, sir. You are lost.
Before we adjourn tonight, both, all of our board members and our professionals would like to thank everyone who attended and participated in tonight's meeting, and all of those who are watching at home. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 6th. I believe the agenda is scheduled to change, but that, it will be the Open Space and Recreation Plan Meeting, and we'll also discuss PDRM 2 Zone. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Hold second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
We have a great night.
You're officially adjourned.